All right, thank you, everybody. Going to. What do I do with my agenda? Just had it here. Sorry. All right, we're going to call the special emergency meeting of Wednesday, July 1st, 2020, at the City of Elgin to order at 4:31 PM. And we'll start with roll call. Let's go by. Let's go by Ward, starting with Ward 1.
Ben here.
Benson here.
One side is here. Brad.
Jones here.
Lopez here.
Forrest too.
Dennis here.
Did I hear? Did I hear Sue there?
Yeah. They are down on them for me.
Let the record reflect that we have a call. All members present except for Councilmember Ariaga. And. That'll lead us into the prayer. Councilman Lopez, you want to lead us in the prayer?
Yeah, I got you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right, let us pray. Lord, tonight at this meeting, it was short notice, but to give us knowledge and wisdom to make our decisions. Help us keep our citizens safe and make the right decisions. And. Just guide us along the way. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, that'll lead us to public comment. Believe staff is going to read off the public comments. We have. We have several. I anticipated that that this new format of. We've given everybody a couple of weeks to kind of get with it. We struck the right chord and we've got several tonight. The way that it worked was we provided a link. For citizens' comments. They fill out the form just like they would in a regular council meeting, submit that. Prior to the meeting, well, each council member has received a copy. Of that. Of each individual citizen's comment will read up to three minutes of it as it was transcribed on the sheet. And it'll be verbally logged in the meeting and on the audio and video portion of the meeting, and then we all have a record of that for ourselves as well. So Tom. Whoever wants to start reading those.
Yeah. Minister. So we, this first one's from Jeff Osmussen, identified as an Elgin resident. I contacted the Bastrop City Manager and Council about an aggressive customer at Lowe's disrespecting social distancing and masks, accosting me for wearing one. Not only did they institute a policy, I pointed. Two per the governor's declarations allowing city and county self-regulations to be instituted. They did so and contacted our city in Smithville too. Thank you. For taking our city's health and wellness seriously. This should defang the political nature of the debate as well. Next is from Randy Crap of 308 South Avenue A in Elgin. This email is sent to serve as public comment for the 7120 council meeting on below agenda item. Face masks have been proven in studies to effectively control the spread of the coronavirus and have been successfully used in other areas for that purpose. Considering the current local infection rates, I fully support the proposed city ordinance as written with stated face mask requirements. And would like to thank the City of Elgin for taking this proactive measure to safeguard our community during this pandemic. Next is Jennifer Spills, 403 South Avenue A. I support the emergency ordinance for making the wearing of face masks mandatory in Elgin, Texas. Thank you for keeping our community safe. Next is from Tommy and Sandy Murphy McCullough. Tommy and I want to offer our full support for establishing a mask requirement for everyone, children and adults. Who are. Who are in any kind of public place. I would also, I would hope that the mayors and county judge would work together on this requirement for Bastrop County. Randications of ignoring the facts would be disastrous. We need to be safe, not sorry. The community will continue to support the businesses affected and we can pull together to get through this. Elgin's history has endured two world wars, pandemics, polio droughts, depressions and other difficult times. Next is from Jason Tatum. From here in Elgin. I believe it's necessary to require masks and social distancing in all businesses and community gathering areas. Close down playground equipment and sports courts. We need to step up to not step aside for the people in this community. You say me first and me above others. We really. We need to work together so that we can make a difference and keep our community safe from this very real and terrible virus. Wearing a mask now is the right thing to do. We will need enforcement of this order. We need to have clear understanding as how we will enforce the ordinance and who will be doing the enforcing. To require something and not enforce it puts a huge strain on the citizens who obey the law, who obey the law and creates opportunities for conflict that we must avoid. It is important that we allow people to have access to our businesses and community at large. We can support our community and be safe at the same time by practicing social distancing responsibly. And supporting the businesses that make every effort to keep you safe while they serve you. From the hike and bike trails in the parks to the coffee shops and hair salons. We can all do better and demand better safety and health practices. Wear a mask, social distance. Have hand washing and sanitizing the top priority. Next is from Joy Kaznovsky. 534 Old McDade Road. I pray today to urge you to enact mask wearing requirements in Elgin. Encouraging mask wearing among Elginites is not enough. The City of Elgin has some of the highest rates of COVID-19 in Bastrop County. It's time we enact the common sense, public health requirements like other towns surrounding Elgin like Bastrop, Taylor, Smithville, Round Rock, and Hutto, to name a few. Next is from Monica Nava Barker, 115 North Main Street. I'm not so much worried about the mask requirement controversy. As I am the hand washing and sanitizing. I'm in a coffee shop on Main Street. And I've experienced many people who do in fact wear masks upon entering and while in the shop. But there are too many who do not wash and sanitize their hands upon entering and leaving. And I feel that this is just as important, if not more. We have a hand sanitizer pump at a table upon entering and encourage everyone to use it as well as selling small bottles. I would like to request is this be mandatory stations as well as any other considerations for public safety? Thank you. Next is from Derek Davis, 403 South Avenue A in Elgin. I support the emergency ordinance for making the wearing of face masks mandatory in Elgin, Texas. However, due to recent stories about certain businesses in town, I would like to see penalties applied to businesses who specifically seek to not follow the ordinance or require patrons to wear face masks where they are closed down for a minimum of 10 days for the first offense, 20 for the second, and 30 for third and all subsequent offenses. Thank you for keeping our community safe. Next is from Juanita Valerie Nighting. Here in Elgin, we have to protect our community and data shows we haven't done everything we could. Since COVID-19 started, Elgin has been a leader in positive cases for Bastrop County. There should be no downplaying to the wearing of masks. This is not political. This is a health and human issue. Our city and county leaders can help take the guesswork out of what our local business owners can do. And all be on the same playing field. All have the same rules. All know what we're going to do moving forward and enforce it properly. The main reason to wear face coverings is not to protect ourselves, is to protect others from our spreading COVID. Should we not? Should we have it and not realize it? We must slow down the spread. Lots of uncertainty remains about this virus. Yet face coverings have been certified to help, which gives us a small way of saving lives and saving our economy. Texas has four of the top five positivity rates in America over those seven days. As of June 30th. Austin is our neighbor and Elgin and Austin citizens intermingle with each other every day. Again, while we don't know a lot about COVID-19, we know cloth face coverings are recommended as a simple barrier to help prevent respiratory droplets. From traveling into the air and onto people when the person wearing the cloth face covering coughs, sneezes, talks or raises their voice. This is called source control. All evidence points to this being an effective way to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Make people wear masks and tell our local leaders they should be wearing them too. Lead by example. Next is from Anne Spaniers of Advocacy Outreach. Please require everyone to wear face masks. Next is from Beth Rawlinsen, Director of Advocacy Outreach. We work with a broad range of Elgin and Bastrop County residents on a daily basis. And I strongly recommend that the city mandate the wearing of face masks in all public places and businesses at this time. I don't have to cite the scientific research as I know our city leaders are aware. It is the fact that wearing of masks works to slow and prevent COVID. We are in a very dangerous situation currently with our proximity to Austin Travis County and our own hotspot in Elgin. The lack of a requirement that residents wear masks has contributed to the current spike and put us all at risk. I have personally encountered one person who tested positive for COVID within the last week and two others who were definitely exposed at their job. And because of that, I must work from home for a period of time. Lack of clarity on whether a person must wear a mask has resulted in everyone interpreting for themselves and it's created a chaotic environment. I have avoided going into any place of business in Elgin and I make a longer drive to grocery stores where masks are required. This can't be good for Elgin economically. We rely on our leadership to guide us at this time. It's important that our city requires residents to protect each other through mask wearing. Thank you. Next is from Ben Casey, pharmacist in charge at the Elgin Medicine Shop. I wish to express my support in favor of a mandatory mask requirement for the City of Elgin. I'm the head pharmacist at the Elgin Medical Medicine Shop and have monitored the COVID since it first started in China. As soon as it hit the US, I implemented safety measures at our pharmacy. We do not allow any non-employees inside the store and while employees are required to wear masks and gloves and maintain distance from customers. Payment transactions are made over the phone when possible and if cash must be exchanged, the cash is quarantined for one week before being handled. I've gone to great lengths to protect the community from the spread of the virus. I was greatly disappointed when Governor Abbott made his decision to open up as soon as he did. I worried that this would lead to a spike in infections and another shutdown requirement. I hoped I was wrong, but the last few days have sadly proved my intuition was right once again. All of the hardship and sacrifice that we have had to endure for the past few months has been essentially for nothing. The damage has been done. There is significant community spread. Masks must be made mandatory and violations must be readily handled with appropriate consequences. These actions are not taken and enforced rigorously. This virus will not leave our communities. Next is from Laura Handon. Please, please do the right thing, the right and obvious thing for our safety by simply requiring people to wear masks in public. Elgin has way too many cases for its size. I live in McDade and in Elgin, but as of today, when I found Bastrop requires mask wearing and Elgin does not. I plan to drive the extra distance to spend in Bastrop. My friends out here feel the same. Thank you. Next is from Kelly Stiletta. To Council Mayor, it's imperative that we require every member of the community to wear masks while in public buildings. As you know, COVID cases are spiking in Texas. They've also risen, rising quickly in our small, in the, they are also rising quickly in our small corner of it. As of June 24th, according to the Elgin Courier, we had 213 cases of coronavirus in the 78621 zip code. As of today, there are 130 in Elgin, 66, 78621 unincorporated and 79 in the 78621 portion of Travis. That's a total of 278. That's an increase of 65 over 30% in just one week. I recognize that the mask question has become politicized. But masks are not political. The virus is not political. Wearing a mask is a moral issue and it's immoral if you refuse to wear one. Why you wear a mask if you knew you had coronavirus? Of course you would. Would you wear a mask if you knew you had coronavirus? Of course you would, because that would be the moral thing to do. But the problem with the virus is you can have it and not know it yet. You can spread it without knowing it. If you wear a mask because you didn't think you had it and it turned out you spread it. How is it any less immoral to not wear it knowing you could have had it? Everyone must assume they have it. The idea of wearing was not to keep from catching it, is to keep from spreading it. Want to point out a difference between two things. There are pre-symptomatic people and asymptomatic people. There are a lot of reports conflating these two things together to be pre-symptomatic means you have the disease. You will become symptomatic, but just haven't had the symptoms yet. Asymptomatic means you've had the disease and recovered, but never had the symptoms. From my reading, I understand that asymptomatic people can't spread the disease, but may catch it again. Pre-symptomatic people who do end up becoming symptomatic are at their most contagious in the two days before they show symptoms. Person who refuses to wear a mask could unintentionally be making people in our little neck of the woods sick. That's why it's imperative and moral for every person to wear a mask if they're inside. Also, as to the freedom aspect of this, I agree that people have freedom to not wear masks. They can do that outside of public buildings. There's no freedom to be a public danger, which is why we restrict people's freedoms to do the things like drink and drive. I apologize for this too long. I have one lung and don't want to die because someone who lives in Elgin thinks it's inconvenient to put on a mask when they go to HEB. Sincerely. Next is from Jody Duran, Elgin ISD Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to submit my comments related to the ordinance requiring face coverings for individuals during this public health crisis. First and foremost, I wish to express my support for this ordinance in the best interest of safety of our city and communities. Importantly. Since the inception of COVID-19, we have learned. What we have learned is that COVID-19 can spread by people who are asymptomatic and do not know they are infected. While this can create an added stress and threat to our personal safety and health, what we know now based on the most recent research and science is that one of the best and most effective methods for mitigating the spread of this virus is to implement universal face covering practices. Health authorities are now consistently reporting the following. Face coverings are likely to reduce the spread of the virus when widely used by people in public settings, especially by those who may already be infected. Evidence continues to mount on the importance of universal face coverings and interrupting the spread of COVID-19. Face coverings are a critical preventative measure that are most essential in times when social distancing is difficult. Since April, we've seen the numbers in our county escalate from 18 confirmed cases to 439, including six deaths. Elgin carries the majority of the positive cases and reported deaths in Bastrop County within the combined incorporated and unincorporated areas of our city. This is a health crisis that requires action. Representing Elgin ISD, we face similar challenge, we face a similar challenge needing to protect the safety and well-being of the families, staff and communities we serve. To that end, we've recently announced our intent to require face coverings, masks or shields for all students and staff when they return to school in August. This is not an easy decision, but we believe it's the right thing to do at this critical juncture. The bottom line is this, unless and until we do our part to protect ourselves and those around us, we will not be returning to normal anytime soon. Making these small adjustments in our daily behaviors and routines such as wearing a face covering in public will benefit us all in the long term by providing added protections to mitigate the spread of the virus. It will also allow us to return to some sense of normalcy sooner than later. This is a matter of public health and safety for all. Therefore, I respectfully request that you adopt the requirement, wearing face coverings as defined in the ordinance. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for your leadership and service to our great City of Elgin during these uncertain times.
Next is. One second, Tom. Would you like the record reflect that? Councilmember Ariaga joined the meeting at 4:48?
It was 4:33.
4:33?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record reflect she entered the meeting at 4:33. I just didn't see it until 4:48. Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Next is from John Allgood, Post Office Box 728 Elgin, Texas. I would like to know why the government of Elgin is so bent on taking away my freedoms? If I don't want to wear a mask at work or other places I shouldn't have to. Others can wear masks to protect themselves if you really believe masks protect you. Half the people I don't, I see don't wear them properly and I have heard that you initially touch your face more than with the mask than without. In addition, there is no eye protection with a mask. As I understand it, there are about 88,000 people in Bastrop County and between 9,000 to 10,000 in Elgin. The information I found shows the deaths are at six for Bastrop County. There are 440 cases in Bastrop County and 195 cases in Elgin. I don't know if that means there are that many today or since this all started. But assuming it is all now, then 0.5% of the county has the COVID. And Bastrop County, 1.36% of the ones with COVID have died from it. That is sad for those that have died, but why all the panic? If 20 to 30% of the people had the virus and 40 to 50% of those were dying, then let's panic, but not for 1.36% of the sick people. Probably the number of people who have it is even higher, which means the percent who die from it is even lower. And if the deaths are for older individuals, then maybe they died from something else. And the organization knowing that if they classify a death as a COVID death, they could get paid more money from the government. They may inadvertently classify the cause of death as COVID instead of another cause, which may have been more relevant to the death. I think those who are susceptible to it should be free to take precautions, but I don't understand why you want to take my freedoms away when the numbers are so low. Thank you for your service. Next. Well, we have another one here that doesn't have a name on it, so I don't really think that qualifies. Next is from Margot Kirkpatrick. I would like to submit a comment by me as Elgin City Council regarding the new business on 71, agenda that emergency ordinance be adopted requiring the wearing of face coverings and repealing any conflicting ordinances resolutions. Next is from Phyllis Balone. Vote yes. Next is from Lenaya Geyser. Please vote to wear masks. Next from Kristin Broadus. I'm a resident and a nurse. I take care of COVID ICU patients. I am a liability to the public. I would like to express my strong opinion and recommendation that enforcing the wearing of face coverings for businesses, their staff and their patrons should be mandated. The pandemic and its effects in Texas and especially ours and surrounding counties is apparent. I understand the need to continue business operations for the benefit of the city and its residents. We can do this safely. Those that disagree should not be permitted to put the rest of us at risk. Certainly, I currently only shop in other counties that mandate face coverings and I would rather put money in our economy, but cannot do it and feel safe. Please strongly consider the safe, most viable option for the health, safety and viability of our county in all concern. Thank you. That's Kristen Turner Broadus, or the other way, two names there. From Leila Emerson. Please require face masks when people are out in public. Elgin has the highest case count in Bastrop County and has proven that the face, use of face masks used in conjunction with other means of slowing the spread is effective. Wearing of masks should not be politicized. This is not an ideological argument. The disease does not choose who to infect based on political affiliation. Mask wearing is the easiest and kindest thing a person can do to support our community. Thank you for your consideration and protecting the health and safety of the residents of Elgin and surrounding communities. Next from Sandy Doughty. I fully support wearing face masks for all. The virus is spread by contact. Your coughing and sneezing and face masks help contain those bodily fluids. It is also spread by people who have it, but have no symptoms. So those people are spreading it without knowing they have it. If everyone was required to wear a mask and spread, the spread of the virus would diminish and we would not continue to overwhelm hospitals. We also would not continue to put hospital staff, first responders, police and people with compromising conditions at risk. Next from Kristin Embry and Adam King at 602 Old McDade Road. Kristin Embry and my husband Adam King are in support of the city enacting a mandate requiring businesses to enforce social distancing and mask wearing amongst its customers. Next is Ashley Smith, the owner of the Clever Tiger. As owner of the Clever Tiger Art Gallery, Jack Coward King, and as a concerned citizen, I would like to convey my support of a mask ordinance. The gallery has been closed to the public since first lockdown and we're unable to open since myself and many patrons are at risk and numerous individuals are not respecting social distance and mask rules. The few private lessons that I've had in the gallery have required locked door because people continuously attempt to come inside without masks. It has also been brought to my attention that some Elginites do not believe that the virus is real. This is very concerning and for the last month, my serious medical conditions have not been treated because of the overwhelming volume of COVID patients in central Texas. Please consider a mask ordinance for businesses so that we may slow the spread, keep the community safe and reopen to the public. Next is Mary Scaletta to the Mayor and Council of the City of Elgin. I write in support of the measure to make masks in public mandatory. I don't know if anyone will speak out against them in this meeting, but if social media is any indication of what might be said. Here are my arguments against what many, although a minority are expressing. It's to the point that being mandated to wear a mask is taking away our freedom. We're mandated to do many things in societies such as wear clothes in public, wear seat belts, wear helmets on motorcycles and bikes, walk in crosswalks and not jaywalk, etc. It is not unprecedented to have regulations for the sake of public safety. Many of those regulations I stated are mostly for the safety of the individual doing them. But as you know, the wearing of masks is one, or is more for the safety of others and thus should not, should be even more important to be mandated by you. This complaint about the taking away of freedom by wearing a mask also does not speak to the freedoms then taken away from people who aren't able to be around people who don't wear masks. My husband is 53, but has one lung. He's essentially on what feels like house arrest because we both agreed that he is not allowed to go anywhere in public, especially to places where people aren't wearing masks. As to the point that masks will make you sick, masks are not the ideal, are not ideal, but to me, the temporary discomfort and temporarily not being able to breathe in the normal air that we have without the mask is far more preferable than getting the disease. And much more important to me than spreading the disease. That said, I'm mindful of the workers that have to spend full shifts in masks. While I feel the mandate is necessary, I hope that businesses can be encouraged to give workers more breaks and to be able to go outside and breathe fresh uncontaminated air. I also think businesses need to be encouraged to think creatively about solutions that employees, so that employees don't have to constantly be wearing masks like having cashiers encased in Plexiglas. Similar to the way gas stations sometimes do for their worker's safety. I stand on the side of mandating a mask because if you look at the data of the counties that are mandated, that mandated them from the beginning versus those who didn't. And now the data coming out between the states that are mandating them versus the states who are not. The difference is vast and abundantly clear. Masks save lives. What's also clear is that people will not wear them always unless they're mandated. Because of that, your votes on this issue literally hold our lives in your hands. I beg you to stand with saving lives. Because of that, your votes on this issue literally hold our lives in your hands. I beg you to stand with saving lives and vote to mandate the wearing of masks in public places and stores in the city of Elgin sincerely and greatly. Next is from Damian Clark at Advocacy Outreach. We must flatten the curve. In Texas, six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five people were tested positive for COVID-19 yesterday. I fully and wholly support an ordinance requiring the wearing of face coverings in response to safety concerns related to COVID-19 pandemic. And that's the last one we have. Are you timing me? How long did that take?
I didn't time, time it. It was about twenty minutes or more.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I was timing the individual ones, but we didn't have any go over three.
Yeah, I just want to reconfirm what you said, Mayor, that all of those in their entirety be attached to the official permanent record, the minutes of this meeting and and council members have received copies of each one of those statements.
All right. Okay, so on to the city manager's report.
Yeah, I don't really have any report. That really shouldn't have been on there.
Okay, then item number one, an emergency ordinance pursuant to Article Three, Section thirteen of the Elgin Home Rule Charter. This is an emergency ordinance declaring that a public health emergency exists because of the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. Establishing requirements related to the posting of a public notice by commercial entities and the wearing of face coverings and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Tom, going to lay this out?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We've got, I've got a few comments. We'll walk through the ordinance. I don't know if Charlie joined us yet or going on, but.
I'm here, Tom.
Okay, thanks, Charlie, but we're gonna have Charlie make a few comments and then the chief and Amy as well. This ordinance has been brought forward during a time, as council knows, is this is an extremely fluid issue in a situation that's changing from week to week, from month to month, that the city, I think, has been very committed, clearly committed to, to literally doing, trying to do everything we can to protect the health and safety of our community. But what we've talked about from the very beginning is this situation, this pandemic, is completely different from, from typical disasters that city and local governments face in that usually issues can be addressed through money and through labor. And if you're in there willing to work hard enough and commit enough funds to addressing local issues that come out of typical disasters, then you can have a lot bigger effect. But we've recognized from the beginning the number one thing we could do is continue to monitor things legislatively and provide whatever information we can to help educate the public, educate our citizens about these issues. I'm satisfied we've done that, I believe. The, the local government in, in obviously the city of Elgin and Bastrop County in general has done everything we can. The challenge we continue to face, though, unlike any other disaster, the key to getting past this one is individual local responsibility. So we, we've struggled from that, with that issue from the beginning in the sense that we've, we've tried to consider what, what action on the part of the city would be appropriate and how aggressive that action should be and, and monitoring those conflicts with, with individual liberties is a tough thing. It's been a tough thing from the beginning. And as council knows, clearly, the governor has prevented those efforts in the past, has, has not supported local governments having some kind of control over this issue from an enforcement standpoint or, or an action standpoint. So that's prevented us, the city frankly, from being, considering even being more aggressive in the past. But now we've, we've got this new opportunity. The, the conditions have changed. And there are some issues where we believe we've, it appears we've, with, with the ordinance that, that we're considering this evening, we've managed to find, meaning the lawyers have managed to find less than somewhat of a middle ground. That seems a little tenuous, but at least right now, the governor doesn't seem motivated to, to step in and object to localities taking this step. And so we do have an opportunity to do something. And I think that's the key is what we've heard from other cities and where we're at now is that, that this ordinance that we're proposing tonight will be very unique in the context of typical ordinances that we adopt and particularly in the way of enforcement. But I, it, it is an opportunity for the city to frankly, to do something that at least in this space of time of frustration and concern and, and, and where people are looking for some guidance that there's still, we're going to talk about tonight, there, there's some issues that make it not as enforceable as typically you'd like, or frankly, we don't anticipate having the resources or the commitment to enforce it at the level of some, what some people may want us to do. But it is an opportunity for frankly, for the city to at least do something, do something in a proactive way, send a message, to be committed and to make a firm, clear message to the public, but that we're not just saying we recommend face coverings, but, but we're requiring them that we want everyone to be safe and we're doing that for the preservation of basic public health and safety. We, we've talked in the past and we're going to talk about this a little bit, both, both from Charlie and, and Patrick's standpoint. When we've met with the mayor and with our local county officials months ago, we, we talked about what can we do in a way of enforcement? What are we desirous of doing? There are concerns about how the courts are going to treat these issues legally, what, what's the impact on jails, what, what again is the governor going to let us continue? So it's those kind of issues that we've tried to think through that traditionally. And when you do a new ordinance or create a new law, you like to have a feeling of how the whole system will work all the way through from initial enforcement through to prosecution, et cetera. Those issues, I would say in general, that, that Chief South and I have expressed before about, about true enforcement are still going to exist, but but we've, again, in response to the current environment, rather than wait around until we can figure all those issues out. Again, this is, this is an opportunity for us to at least take one step forward and try to do something locally to, to, to address this situation. So I guess that's kind of where I wanted to stop. These are the numbers. We heard some numbers from, from some of the public comments. These are just the numbers we pulled out today. Again, just, I think everybody knows Elgin is definitely a hotspot for the virus in, in Bastrop County. We, there have been actions yesterday, the city of Smithville and the city of Bastrop both took some action to move forward with, with a comparable measure. But, but we're clearly in a different situation here in Elgin than even them. We try to be consistent throughout the county, but, but, but our numbers are obviously very significant. Elgin alone. And I'll say again, as it said before, this, it's important, I think, to recognize that unfortunately, I think there's a few folks that see this as some kind of, I'm confused by this, but see it as some kind of political statement or issue, whether to wear a mask or not wear a mask. And, and obviously, that really has nothing to do with it from our perspective and, and what we're trying to get done today. This is totally a health and, and safety issue. So, so with that, I think we'll, Charlie, why don't you just kind of jump in if you have any general comments here and, and Mayor, I thought we'd let Charlie and Patrick speak a little bit and then we'll just open it up for general discussion. That's okay.
Thanks, thanks, Tom, Mayor. This is Charlie Crossfield. The ordinance that I had before you is perjured from Round Rock's ordinance, which they adopted last week. It requires face covering inside public buildings or outside where it's difficult to stay more than six feet away. There are exceptions which are listed there when you're engaging in physical activity, when you're in a bank that requires surveillance, when you're drinking or eating, when so doing causes a, a mental or a physical problem, or when you're outside with a group of members within your single household. I, I think one thing that, and I don't like to opine on, on things other than legal issues, but some of the things I've heard were repeated in Round Rock. Round Rock is a very conservative city, but business friendly. And they saw this as not a moral issue, but as an economic issue. And this was a far better alternative to a lockdown. And in their opinion, what they're trying to do is to keep their economy alive. They, the mayor in particular stressed that he was not trying to take away any freedoms, but he was trying to retain the freedoms that, that we have now. So I'm here to answer any questions and I'll turn it over to Tom or the chief.
It's a hell of a way to sell it. I like that.
Thanks, Charlie. We, you know, one thing that I think we've talked before and discussed with council members is that this, this is another part of this whole issue that's, it's just new and unique and weird for all of us is the enforcement end. And, and, you know, but when, when we talk about enforcement, certainly from the staff standpoint, it's, it's, it presents a unique problem. So an issue that's absolutely paramount for the basic council management form of government is that council makes the laws, adopts the laws, and the staff simply enforces what the law says. And, and so that, that's normally what we do. And so that's what's been on our mind since we've started this. So, so the true enforcement of this, the literal enforcement to the nth degree is going to be very difficult. We talked about from the start. You know, we're very limited on resources. Any particular focus on this effort? Obviously, we cannot have a dedicated crew that's just driving around town looking for people not wearing masks. That'll compromise all other levels of public safety we provide. So we don't have the, the resources to devote to that. At the same time, we're ready to enforce any law that, that the city council adopts. So with that, I was going to ask the chief, though, to speak a little bit to how he anticipates how we can carry out enforcement, but at the same time, continue to provide the police services on a day-to-day basis that we're expected to. So, chief, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, thank you. Really, Tom kind of took a lot of thunder out of what I was going to talk about and say that we are truly willing and will enforce any law or rule that the council adopts and particularly as an ordinance. That's our job and we'll do that to the best of our ability. There are some unique circumstances surrounding this particular topic. So far, we have the punishment section that's listed is a fine only. So there will not be an arrest for this particular offense. It's going to be a citation only. Obviously, if people are in a situation where they don't want to leave and they're being asked, you know, there's, there's other laws that will apply in those circumstances that are not related to this. However, for this in particular, the most we anticipate, the vast majority of the actual currents is actually being a warning. We don't anticipate the majority of them being actual citations. In lieu of actually sending officers out in a proactive manner, going from business to business to ensure that this is being done, we will respond when we're called in situations where business owners or other people in the, in the public call us to take some important action. And then obviously, that's going to have to take into account the other calls for services that we have as well. And the other need for public safety that we have to invoke. That's really all I have, Tom.
Hey, chief. Mayor, just a couple of comments. This part, you know, but I, I would say that we, while I think all three cities in Bastrop County and as well as others are considering this basic concept, the up-to-date information, and Chris, I know you'll correct me if I don't have this right, was that both Bastrop and Smithville took certain action yesterday relative to this general topic. Bastrop, the city of Bastrop issued a mayoral order that, that essentially makes the face coverings required in businesses only and places all that response, basically all that responsibility for enforcement on the businesses.
No, that's backwards, actually. The way I understood it, I got a copy of it here. It was more about the individual and the businesses were urged to comply. Businesses have to post a sign. A sign notice.
But they're not, but the other requirement outside, there's no requirement to wear masks outside of those businesses, I think, is the difference. Yeah, anyway, I provided a copy of that order to all the council. We sent it out last night. Smithville, in this, they considered a very similar ordinance to what you're looking at here. And, and I do think that's the variables that we're prepared to discuss tonight. What you see on the screen is the exceptions to requiring individuals to wear masks in, in city limits. I think that's pretty comprehensive. And as you can see, it's, it's a pretty good list that, that covers, we think about any other unique situation. But we can certainly talk about any of those if you'd like or adding to. We have already come up with this sign that we would distribute to not, obviously, we wouldn't go around delivering this to every business in town, but we'd make, the city would make these available electronic copies or printed copies as best we could, like, like we have with other signs in the past, but, but hopefully it's for the businesses here in town that, that wouldn't require them to come up with their own signage. In Smithville, it's my understanding, the one change they made from this basic concept is, is you see in the penalty section of the ordinance, it specifically states that that individuals that are determined to violate this ordinance will be given a warning first. I, I would tell you that typically, we would not, you know, this gets to a different level of kind of a little bit of micromanaging. I would say that you, as far as enforcing the law when we adopt an ordinance, that these aren't, that provision isn't normal in an ordinance. And typically, you don't see the council get into that level of direction to the staff. At the same time, I think Round Rock and other places that have included this provision, it does send an important message from the council to the public that, that, that there's not real a specific intent here to seek out violators of the law and punish them as much as our effort is to issue warning and educate people. And I think, so I think in this case, it's appropriate that it be in the ordinance and be clearly understood by everybody. However, my connection back to the Smithville discussion was that it's my understanding in the end, the council, the police didn't like this particular provision being in, so the, the city council took that out and, and it just enables the police in Smithville to issue a ticket whenever they think it's appropriate. So I just make those points that that's what's going on in the other areas of the county. And finally, I just wanted to mention.
Just for the record, I support that actually being in the ordinance.
Okay. We, we do think, and again, I think that chief and I talked about that today and we, again, this goes back to the enforcement issue. Basically, our, our objective is to educate, seek voluntary cooperation, encourage people to help us that way. And so again, that's when we, what we mean when we talk about a typical approach to enforcement. And then finally, I just wanted to clarify the expiration date provision that's in here is, is directly from our charter that just says that anytime we do an emergency ordinance like this, it automatically is repealed after sixty days. But that, basically, the if we implement this, the council couldn't pull the plug on it at any time. It doesn't mean it has to stay in place for sixty days. It just means. It just means, uh, in, and if, if we don't do anything, i- it will expire in 60 days. And if, uh, you know, uh, I hope it's, we're, we're not in the same place or worse in 60 days. But if we reach that point, then the council would just have to adopt another ordinance at that time. So, uh, there's nothing real magical about that expiration date. Uh, again, Mayor, with that, I guess I'd say that covers it from our standpoint, and...
I have one more comment.
Try to answer any questions or... All right, is that you, Chief?
Yes, I, so I had just one more comment.
Go for it.
Before, on, on, on the enforcement aspect, I, I didn't mention before, I wanted to mention now. I did make contact with Alan Banks, who's the chief of police around Rock and other area chiefs, to ensure that our type of enforcement, what we were kind of expecting to do was similar to what they are doing. And we're all on the same page, uh, and the enforcement activity will be consistent pretty much all the way through Central Texas. Uh, and the, the bill's a little different. And, but I thought, uh, to maybe, and, and put maybe in, in Bastrop, I anticipated the improvements itself.
Thanks, Chief. Amy, are you on there? I forgot, I forgot. I was gonna ask Amy real quickly, just to share with council, uh, how we anticipate kind of spreading the word about this information and from her perspective as our, our downtown, uh, Main Street manager, what, what she perceives, uh, the response to businesses may be in, in general about this. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay. Hi. Uh, so we've already been providing signs to the downtown businesses and, uh, all the Highway 290 and 95 commercial corridor businesses that offered sign, sign options related to masks when they were recommended or, um, folks had a couple of fun options with Priscilla the Pig and, uh, the Wildcat. We got a very good response to those as we made them available, uh, at the chamber and so on. And, uh, so now with this, this is more regulatory version. And, uh, the sign that Tom showed you, uh, we can easily produce that in-house, just like we did the, the more fun options earlier. And we can make those available again, uh, for folks to pick up at the chamber, at City Hall. Uh, we've talked about the library because we're offering, um, packet pickups for summer reading things, and they have their sidewalk deliveries. So that's a kind of a safe public location where folks could get them, and it will be available, uh, online. And so folks will format it so that it can be printed in a smaller size. This is 11 by 17. Um, through, throughout the community, it does seem like most businesses are, uh, participating in face coverings. Uh, and we have not received any complaints about face coverings. Um, you know, either today in direct response to this item or, uh, previously, as, as, just as the community's been dealing with this pandemic.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. Yeah, Mayor, that covers it for us. So we're glad to try to answer any questions or expand on anything we've talked about. Okay, Council, I'll put up for questions or comments.
Chris, Chris, this is Jessica. I just have a quick general question before we kind of move into additional ones. Tom, can you, uh, quickly reiterate, um, the recent public building closings? As well as, as we possibly progress through the next 60 days, some of the other public entities that may be considered, uh, for closing, such as maybe sports courts, pools, anything like that?
Yeah, we're, as we've, uh, you're right, uh, basically, we've gone back to, uh, closing all of our main buildings, uh, the City Hall, the, um, City Hall Annex, the Court Office. Uh, but as we've tried from the very beginning is to try to walk that very thin line between, uh, recognizing that folks are frustrated and need to get out. And so how can we continue to head out and have some access to the library, some access to parks, some access to the rec center? So we, we've, um, we've greatly restricted that access. We're still doing our sidewalk program at the library. You can't get in the building for, uh, other, anything other than very limited access to the computer station. But, uh, same with the rec center, but, but, uh, you can still do sidewalk borrowing at the library. Uh, we, we've tried, uh, we, we want to try to go ahead with opening the pool this weekend or is that today? Amy, did we open the pool today?
Yes, we did, but it's very limited by reservation only. Uh, in advance, it's, uh, maximum of four people, all from the same household per lap lane. And, uh, we have three lap lanes, and those lanes are very wide. Uh, so it's outdoors, and, uh, there are general pool operations happening throughout central Texas, actually under broader circumstances than, than that. But this is what we feel like is manageable for our staff's, uh, capacity at our, at our pool with the size pool we have.
We, um, and then the parks, uh, facilities in general, we've continued to basically make, embrace the concept of, uh, the open areas of the park are still open to people. Uh, we've, we've allowed people to go ahead on and utilize sport courts and, and playground equipment, meaning at their own risk. Uh, um, I consider it more as being we're, we're, we're not preventing them from doing that as much as we're, we're authorized, or we're not renting the pavilion, we're not opening the restrooms at the parks, uh, or not opening any other facilities for you. So we're really trying to walk a thin line and a delicate balance. Uh, what we're doing, uh, where we are, a little more open, I think, in that regard than, than other cities in Bastrop County. But frankly, we're, we're trying to recognize that people need something to do, and we're trying to find safe ways where they can still use those facilities to a minimum degree and still do it safely. And we haven't had problems to date, and we hope we can continue to stay open that much where we don't have to fence off the parks and prevent people from going there. But, but as we're saying here tonight about the issue we're dealing with, it's a constantly changing situation. We'll just have to see how it go. Did that answer your question, Jessica? I know that was kind of all over the place.
No, I did. Just, uh, a follow-up. So if, if we consider face coverings as a requirement, how is staff prepared to monitor, uh, situations in, at, at the pool, at the parks, sports courts, whatnot? How might we go about monitoring in that regard where it is difficult to stay six feet away or social distance?
Yeah, all right, that, that good part I left out. A part of our whole plan mandates all that, uh, all employees are supposed, are required to have face covering with them at all times. And, and whenever they can't achieve social distancing, uh, they're to wear those. Uh, the buildings that we're still fully operational here at City Hall, for example, but it's, uh, the closed to the public, we achieve social distancing in most of those places. Um, but we will continue to monitor this together. And I mean, I think that's, that's a good point, uh, that we left out. Uh, when we talk about enforcement, uh, we don't, we won't consider this strictly a police matter. Uh, it'll be an expectation to all staff at all public facilities that, that we're all embracing this policy, the philosophy, the requirement of face coverings, and, and we'll be working together to make sure that happens. But, uh, but again, short of, um, completely cutting off access to all these facilities, it, it is kind of a case-by-case monitoring as we go. We were talking the other day in a meeting about, you know, we all kind of keep an eye on the basketball court down at Memorial Park when we drive by there, uh, keep an eye on the parks. And, uh, everybody's kind of trying to do that. Uh, but, um, it's not a foolproof method, but, but I'm satisfied we're trying to hit in the middle between, uh, not completely restricting access to people to every one of the public facilities, but at the same time, um, embracing these rules and making sure we're adhering to them as best we can.
Are they also addressing, um, limits on how many people are gathered in one particular spot or monitoring that?
Yeah, we haven't, we don't really have restrictions in that way already. Amy, can you help me with that a little bit? Again, this is back to the pavilion rental concept. We, we've quit renting the pavilion, which we felt like, uh, um, uh, gave tacit authorization or approval. So we've tried to prevent that. At the same time, it's a similar issue where, uh, we obviously can't have a guard sitting down there at the pavilion to make sure 10 people don't get in there. But Amy, why don't you go ahead and add a little bit to it if you can?
Sure, yes. Um, so we are continuing in our outreach with the community to, to remind the community that not gathering in groups of, of 10, more than 10, or gathering outside your household is one of the practices that you can follow to help slow the spread of COVID-19. And we are, oh, really, all we can do is monitor the use at the park facilities. And if the use increases on the basketball courts, for example, um, then we would recommend that those facilities be closed as we did, uh, much earlier in the pandemic. At this time, um, what we're seeing is moderate use. Uh, and households do appear to be, um, isolating from each other as they're, uh, using the trails or using, um, the, the sport court areas. Uh, when it, you, so it looks like it's working at this point, that people are self-managing. Uh, and we do require masks, uh, in public areas at the recreation center. And, uh, that will be required in public areas and the pool deck at the pool. So the restroom facility and then the, the pool deck where you can't necessarily socially distance. We have that in place for those facilities. I've also seen signs around town, uh, for, uh, like a summer camp, uh, for cheerleading and football. Do you know how they planned to manage that?
Uh, uh, Amy, do you know anything about that one? I, I mean, those wouldn't be, we've, we, we're not authorizing any of those things for city facilities and, and rentals right now. So, uh, I, I've seen the same sign, Susie, but I don't know, uh, I don't really know anything about them. Don't know where they all occurred. Yeah, I wanted to follow up one thing from Amy, just 'cause I, I had similar questions, and she, uh, helped me understand that, um, are we, if, while we're, um, is it, one of the reasons we think we could continue to operate the, the rec center and the pool in a safe manner is they're very contained areas that we have direct control over. So when we talk about this issue, for example, it sure sounds boring to me and frustrating if I was a kid being at the pool. I have to wear a mask when I'm walking around the pool. But that's what Amy's enforcing down there. So you can't get the virus in the water. We've got a big fence all the way around the pool. We all know how big it is. We can stand in one place, basically, and see everybody there. So we just exercise a whole different level of control, uh, at the pool and at the rec center than we do, you know, in the entirety of Memorial Park. So, so that's how we can say with confidence that we can ensure compliance in those facilities, even though they seem similar to the park in general. It, it's really the monitoring part that we don't have the ability to monitor all the, all the grounds of all the parks in the same way we do those, those facilities.
All right, other questions?
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Forrest.
I have, uh, probably a question for Chief South, and then I have probably a follow-up comment about that. So Chief, back when the county was making their recommendations or statements or whatever, you found that, um, their requirements that included a fine, uh, were not enforceable. And so what makes this different from that?
Good question. It was the manner in which the governor had written the order which made it unenforceable. A city ordinance adopted by council is fully enforceable. It's, it's, it's a civil process still, which, which is why we will not make an arrest for it, but it can be punished for, so it's applicable with that.
All right.
Charlie, you wanna jump in on that one at all?
That has to do with our home rules.
That the governor's order was under Chapter 418 of the Local Government Code, and the actions that we're taking are pursuant to another section of the Health and Safety Code in our charter. And it's our opinion that it allows us to go ahead and penalize, but not incarcerate.
As a home, as a home rule city, right?
Say that again, Chris.
As, as a home rule city, that, because it's in our charter and we're fining and, and not arresting.
Correct.
Right.
And really, the only reason the governor's orders were not enforceable, they, they, they stated which, which code that they were gonna use and which, which section of law they were using, but they, he'd never enacted the actual punishment of it. So he said, "This is what we're gonna go by," but he never said it was actually a violation.
Okay. Okay, so, so that's, that's good to know. So my comment would be, uh, as far as enforcement is concerned, um, I, I would like us to take a more, you know, um, educational approach to that first warning and possibly even, um, have the officers carry a box of, you know, um, face masks with them. And if somebody doesn't have one, you know, don't send them home or whatever. Let them go about their business if they're going into a business or whatever, and provide them with a face mask. There's, uh, on Amazon, there's, you know, boxes of them that are individually wrapped. And so you're not handing somebody something that's been riding around in the back of the car, and who knows, you know, where it's been. But with it being individually wrapped, if we give them that and say, "Hey, look, you know, we're gonna provide you this, but let's see you, you know, doing this. We'll give you the warning." No, so is there a chance of that?
Yeah, so our, our approach has always been educational, and it will continue to be. We, we spend a lot of time doing that. The last thing we want to have to do is take any type of enforcement action. We want, we want compliance from individuals. And so far, with maybe an occasional issue, we've had 100% compliance. Uh, like I said, I can count on one hand the number of times we've actually had issues. We did look earlier on about trying to provide some of those face masks if we went, but with the availability of the PPE and for us to be able to get them and have them for staff, and then the cost associated with that, it was prohibited for us to do that. Uh, is, if it does become more available and more cost-effective, I'm sure we can go ahead and look at doing that in the future, but we're gonna have to have funding available to do that.
Well, I, I sent Tom a, a link to, to one that seemed to be readily available. I mean, it has a, had a close-in delivery date where in the past, you know, it was three weeks out or whatever, but it seems like, you know, we can have a box of them within three days, so.
Yeah, and we, we have current, uh, set, setups for where we can get the PPE, but we have to, we have to show what we're using and how we're using it. And a lot of the time, I've found, quite honestly, when we go to sites and try to get additional PPE, they usually say, "Well, yeah, we have it available." Then when you order it, it'll show you, "Well, we're six months behind," or "We're three months behind." So that's kind of, that kind of gets you by getting you in the front door, but then you're actually ordering portion of it, they don't really have it available right away.
Right.
I think we made, Chief made one order, I think, for us, a mask or something, didn't you? And that, when they got here, we realized they came from the, uh, one province over in China for where the virus started, so.
That's the cameras everybody are using.
Yeah, we decided we shouldn't use those cameras, but that's, uh... We, uh, availability of masks is, hasn't been a big problem and, uh, that we've encountered, but we've, we've, we've taken them around wherever we're at, marches, things like that, make them available. Your point's well-taken. If it's simply a matter of somebody willing to wear one and doesn't have one, we, we can find a way to provide one to that person.
Walmart has them in boxes right now.
Yeah.
What if you deal with a chronic offender, someone that just refuses to put on a mask in any business they walk into?
Well, that's, there, that's gonna be the situation that is...
The trespass.
Yeah, that, so we can, the business owner can issue them a criminal trespass warning, and if they refuse to leave, they'll be arrested. That's why I said there's a lot of other things we can invoke. Uh, so that individual won't be arrested for, not the mask, but for criminal trespass. So there's a variety of laws that we have available to us that if somebody is that much of an issue and a problem, uh, we'll be able to address it another way.
I did wanna comment on that just briefly, if I could, Mayor, at that point. Susie, I do think that, um, unlike other situations like this, clearly, there's some people that think this is an infringement on their rights. And, and I do think that we shouldn't be surprised to almost see, uh, an organized effort, if, and not necessarily Algen, but other places to, to resist this, this rule. So, uh, so, you know, like most... So so, you know, like most things we do, how we'll deal with those, or almost we'll deal with them as they come. But I think this is, our eyes should be wide open going into this, that I think it's a case where we're going to see, I think, a minimal amount, but you're going to see some people, I think, or we need to be prepared to recognize that some people are specifically and intentionally going to resist this this law, even though we make it a law. So we'll just have to deal with those things as they come along.
And a more likely scenario that I anticipate happening with the with the exemptions that we have listed particularly would be for someone that's saying they're claustrophobic or something, or whatever, and they can't wear a mask, and still want to be able to shop in a business, and then the owner of the business doesn't want to be there and ask them to leave, and they don't think they should have to. I think that's going to be more of an issue for us, and trying to talk people through that and and working that situation out, and asking that individual to leave, and letting them know that, no, you can't, and you can't do it this way. And again, we'll do that educationally. I don't, we haven't had to make an arrest so far in doing any of this stuff like this, so I don't anticipate doing any of these. But sure, as I said that now, you might, we're probably going to have an.
I understand, Susie, to your question, the trespass thing, it's basically the same same thing as no shoes, no shirt, no service type deal, same thing with the mask.
So one other question. The the governor and the has has made special considerations for churches and exceptions for churches on some of the guidelines that he's laid out. And I'm wondering if this is going to apply to, or is this going to go along with some of those exceptions for the churches, or if it's going to be enforced there too?
So I'll let Charlie answer that aspect. It's my opinion as the chief that churches would not be applicable for this particular ordinance because of their right, religious rights together in the constitution. So there are a couple of situations where, like particularly with churches, I don't think they're wanting for the poll.
Charlie?
Did we lose our counsel?
I'm here, I agree with that. The the Religious Protection Act would would protect them from that.
Okay, thank you.
I know at our church, we we do encourage people to wear the mask if they're going to be, you know, talking closely together, following service or whatever, but but during during, you know, time we were spaced out in the room and all, and so it's nothing distant, so.
Through the recent events, I've had an opportunity to speak with the vast majority of pastors and reverends in the community, and most everybody who's not already doing video services or services on on Facebook or YouTube Live are all practicing social distancing and making sure that they're.
Good, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Jessica, another follow up question. I don't know if Amy addressed this when she spoke about the Main Street businesses, and if so, my apologies, I just wanted additional clarification. Do we have any businesses currently that are that we're aware of that will refuse this requirement? And if so, what are the options to those businesses if they do not require customers to wear masks?
So I can't address the the options in dealing with it, but the Liberty Tree Tavern was specifically requiring that patrons not wear masks. They're currently closed under the revised operating orders of the governor because as a bar. And I, it's my understanding that Bob's Tavern, which is on Highway 290, had a similar practice, but again, is at this time is affected by the the governor's operating orders. So Charlie would have to address the other pieces.
Charlie, you clear with what that question is?
Yes, and it is true that the the bars have closed down, so that point, as far as the bars are concerned, is moot. And I think I'm going to echo what the chief said, that we're going to have to deal with these these cases on a case by case basis, and hope that that we can educate people that what we're trying to do is help them and not hurt them.
That's right. I think a lot of this is my case.
Just follow up on that, Amy, though, that at the same time, once again, the vast majority of our businesses throughout this whole event have been very cooperative, have been very supportive, have mainly just looked to the city for direction and guidance, and we've not, we've really not seen a lot of resistance from businesses, isn't that right?
Yes, that's that's very true. They they have appreciated the support we've provided in the signage throughout the process, the information we've shared with them. People have often called asking for clarification, both through our office at the city and through the chamber, but we have have not had difficulties on their part. They just want to have a clear understanding of what they need to do. I think everyone's seeking to be functionally as operational as possible, but still trying to protect the community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? All right, well, I'm prepared to to take this for a vote if there's no other discussions or questions. Staff got everything out that they want.
Yep, we're good.
Council, good?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to pass the the emergency order as presented.
Mayor, I make a motion. To pass as presented, this is Brazier.
Second by Lopez?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Brazier, and a second by Councilmember Lopez. Then any other questions? All right, then I'll call for a vote soon.
Brazier, yes.
Yes.
Montana's, yes. Cannon, yes.
Benson, yes.
Baker, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Councilmember Ariaga, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, then that passes, then that passes unanimously. Thank you, council. I guess a follow up email as far as I'm, I was trying to look earlier on the when this would go into, when we go into effect, once it's signed, or do we have his time stamped on there? I don't have it in front of me.
It says tonight.
Time stamped on there.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and. Okay, I think that that does it then. Is there any, any, any questions or general announcements before we adjourn? Okay, then I will adjourn. Happy Fourth of July, that's right, stay at home.
Where are you, man?
Amen.
And then I'm going to adjourn us at 5:49. Thank you very much, council, for your patience. You looking good, Brad? It looks pink on camera.
Thanks. Bye.